Okay. I appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session. Good to see everyone zooming in and want to remind everybody that this is being recorded, I believe, on Facebook Live and also for the archives. Thank you, Janie, for your support. Format of a work session, just to remind those that are listening or tuning in, is an opportunity for council to have open discussions regarding issues. Tonight happens to be reviewing the new name for the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. The ambition is to, is not to hear from the public in this setting. So there is participatory part of this, but of course, we welcome your comments and participation at regular meetings, which are the first and third Thursdays of every month at 8:00. And for the foreseeable future, we'll continue to be zooming in. The, I do want to bring to council's attention, I'm sure you're all planning to join the Planning Commission at 6:30 for their work session. Our meeting will conclude at 6:15, if not prior, to avail less than opportunity to freshen up before 6:30 and for the Planning Commission to be able to zoom in. If we do need additional time to discuss, we'll schedule another time, but also remind you that we have the, this item will continue to be on our regular agenda as well. I think as far as looking at the discussion, homework that I recall being assigned was a history lesson from Marilyn, and Dennis will review survey results from the Survey Monkey. Was there, were there any other topics or issues that council wanted to discuss relative to this meeting and the name change? Hearing none. I'm not aware of who wants to go first. If we want to look at numbers first or history first, and would seek guidance from Marilyn and Dennis. Maybe y'all can rock paper scissor. Marilyn, I think you're still muted if you're...
Well, let's see here. Hang on one second. Okay, here we go. Just wanted to get to the final survey results. Our survey through July 26th collected 1,707 responses. There were a lot of responses that requested or demanded that the name not change, but looking at the ones that, that actually suggested a name change, it looks as though the one that got the most, the most attention was Lexington Memorial Cemetery. That was the number one suggestion from the public survey. There were a number of what I considered to be really nice suggestions, but, and I think we can make that list available to folks if they want to see it, but Lexington Memorial Cemetery ended up being the most popular suggestion. Did anybody on council have a question about the survey? I know you've all had a chance to look at it and parse it yourself. One thing I should point out that the, the survey asked for your residence, to identify your residence, but that was a voluntary item. And in fact, looking at the IP addresses, some people who indicated that they were from Lexington were not from Lexington. There's really no way to, to police that other than going to every IP address and checking it out, but just FYI, if it said it was in Lexington, it not necessarily in Lexington. Did any council members have questions about, about the survey results or?
No questions, but just a thanks, a huge thanks to you and Janie for filtering through that and putting it together and presenting it in a easy to understand and interpret way for council and the rest of the public that's viewing, so we can move forward in a, in a simple and easy process. So.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks for that.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I was gonna ask if Marilyn's on and she wanted to talk about the, oh, there she is. Okay.
Hi, Ken. First, I want to extend my thanks and gratitude to the Washington and Lee University Archivist Seth Goodheart and Lisa McCown, Eric Wilson of the Rockbridge Historic Society, and Doug Harwood, our local historian, which I took the liberty to give him that title myself, all of them for providing a wealth of historical facts about our local burial grounds, the familiar ones and even the unfamiliar. In 1789, Lexington Presbyterian Church members were meeting in an Oak Grove area of the current property and of the current cemetery property. And then in 1797, the trustees of the Presbyterian Church purchased a partial of land and from a James Berry and his wife Anne. So the land adjacent to it was used as the church cemetery for their members. In 1845, they moved the church to its current location at the corner of Main and Nelson and kept the cemetery as is. In 1891, in the middle of the night, a W.C. Charlton and his black helpers moved the remains of Stonewall Jackson Cemetery and some family members who had been buried elsewhere into the church cemetery, which was soon called the Lexington Cemetery. In 1949, Lex Pres transferred ownership to the town of Lexington. Repulsions were made, however, such as any denomination could be buried there. Specific local churches were named as part of those denominations. Privilege was given to Lex Pres members. Descendants of those who were already interred there were given privilege as well. There was a request that the town provide perpetual care to burial plots and the monuments to ensure that it remained a refuge of peace, rest, and beauty for the honored dead, so the document says. Although the name had been used such as the Old Church Cemetery, the Lexington Cemetery, the Lex Pres, Lexington Presbyterian Cemetery, the Presbyterian Cemetery, all of those were used, but the Lex, the Presbyterian Cemetery was the name on the plaque, for example. So, so many different names were used, but in the deed, there was a request to provide a new name for the cemetery, and the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery name was suggested, and it duly became such by town ordinance in 1949. Then in the 1800s, there were indications of what we might deem today as questionable and odd, but there were strong ties between some masters and their slaves in regard to the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery, such as namely a master buried a slave there, a slave buried a master there. A black woman was take, was taken care of by her white neighbors in, on a nearby street was buried there. The Black Sexton of Lexington Presbyterian Church was buried there. But fast forward beyond the 1800s and far into the 1900s and the Jim Crow era, which had a stronghold on its Confederate history, the irony of those relationships between some masters and their slaves, the Jim Crow era birthed the blatant racist behaviors that are familiar to most of us today. So much so that it was found in 1971 a version of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery Rules and Regulations book. And I can give thanks to Tamara DeVal for providing copies of the information from those, from those books. Want to, you know, give her that recognition, but the first version that she had was 1971, and it's given to plot owners who purchased plots. And so the first rule in the Rule and Regulation book said, "The lots are held for no other purpose than for the burial of human bodies of the white or Caucasian race." Now, I don't know when it was changed, but at least by 2012, in an updated version of the book, it did not include that particular rule. And I imagine that a future city council along the way got into some real good trouble to make that change happen. So when I did read that, I realized that even as recent as 1971, the year that I had graduated Lexington High School, having passed that location many times to and from, that I could not be buried there, not even then. Another discovery in the research validates with Dr. Allison Bell, the archaeologist at Washington and Lee, who's instrumental in the Ancient Jane process, said that there was an indication that because of the type of plants grown in the area that the Methodist church built on Randolph Street once had their own cemetery there, which was abandoned when the Methodist congregation passed it on to black Methodists. So when she started, when she was researching Ancient Jane in that particular area where she was found, she also saw the type of plant growth in that area, which was indicative of the possibility of having been a burial ground. So in reading back through this research, we found out that there actually was a cemetery adjacent to the Randolph Street Church, which is news to me. In the meantime, there was another cemetery some blocks away on the east side of town, on the edge of the town, and at that time, where it was called the Bynumister Road, which became Washington Street, the block of Lewis and Washington onto, toward Marble, was called the Cemetery of the Collet People. The land was started by, the cemetery, excuse me, was started by Captain William Wilson of the Wilson Walker House fame, was purchased somewhere between 1820 and 1840, and the cemetery was in use at least by 1871 or even before that. Whatever the timeframe was, there had been generations of slaves and servants crowded in there, in that burial area. However, the black community complained about the care of it to make, they wanted to make the burial site neat and attractive and respectable. Meetings were held at the First Baptist Church to possibly organize, they considered raising funds to take care of it, hiring a contractor to do so, whatever they could to do to perpetually clean the supposed six acre burial ground. But it's noted in records that it's six acres, but it really didn't look that, that large. It still does it today. But the town started conversations about this matter around 1880, and later that year, the town closed on the lot. So the town was deeded the lot by January of 1881. The town then became the owner and responsible, they were responsible as manager of the cemetery, but they immediately turned it over to a trustee group of black men to take care of it. But records cannot be located concerning the monetary transactions, but in 18, by 1891, the trustees, well, after a period of time, the trustees were no longer living to address those issues. So the bottom line was that public cemeteries have revenue, which helps to take care of them in a good condition, and the black people of Lexington were willing to supply that need for many years. And it became tradition for the black community to take care of their own cemetery. And I even remember this myself in earlier years, hearing family and friends and the adults talking about how upset they were about how the cemetery was kept. By the end of, back before this, by the end of World War II, the city needed money. They didn't have money to maintain the cemetery. So they decided to subdivide it and sell it, the, the one on Washington Street. So they met at the First Baptist Church to discuss this with the black community. The report said that those, the, the report the city gave was that those who were buried there had been moved to Evergreen, which by then was the most recent edge of town. However, ever, where Evergreen is now, that was the edge of town, once there had been some movement of the city expanding its, its borders. There's no record, as of this day, of a huge undertaking of a mass removal of graves, or no, there's no record of the cost of removing graves, and still no one who's still alive recalls that ever happening. This was not pleasing to the community, so the town told them that they would at least run a water line to Evergreen, so that it could be watered. So if they wanted a nice cemetery, this was the deal, because the town was determined to let go of the Washington Street Cemetery, to sell it and subdivide it, and that is what they did. As time went by, there was still no water at Evergreen, and the town said that there was no money to provide a line. But as soon as they said that, soon after, they ran a water line to call Alto instead. Now, I remember as a young person going to Evergreen that we had to take many filled jugs of water for the flowers to place on graves. And I also remember, as I said, the bickering going on back and forth between the citizens and the city about the condition of Evergreen. And finally, the city did take it over into its total care and responsibility. And I was told about the Washington Street Cemetery as an adult, and that I was walked there in a stroller, even in 1953, when I was born, and when they were taking me on walks downtown, and there were no houses there yet, I was told. So the people who are still living today, who remember it, they remember it well. I do ask one thing, that the owners of the current houses on that land, that we are respectful of their privacy as these discussions take place, again, as they were discussed in 2008, in regard to the sites mentioned in my report. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Marilyn. It's a, a big box to unpack. Interesting history. Thank you. I was gonna say, when, were you on council when there was recognition of the Washington Street Cemetery by the Sons of Confederacy, who wanted to put a state historical marker, and council chose not to, and that historical marker, recognizing those, that black cemetery is on Route 11 bypass behind Maury River Middle School. So.
I remember that it was in 2008, when all the conversations were taking place between the Rockbridge Historical Society and the city of Lexington in regard to that spot. I remember talking to the owner of that land quite a bit, and the urging from, from the owner to please tell the city not to allow a sign to go there, because she was already getting trespassers, and it was frightening that strangers were coming on her property wanting to do some research.
Right.
The part that I don't recall was when the sign went up on Route 11, and I don't recall that council was involved in that too much, that it just happened.
Correct. Since that's in the county, the, the county approved that, and the city wasn't involved. It was just the city, and thank you for the, the memory or reminding me that the homeowner was concerned about trespassing. And the other part that I remember was that there was no real place to pull off to read the marker, and that, that was a precursor for, for having that.
Right. The, the last discussion I recall was putting a marker somewhere in the proximity, though, but around City Hall.
Right.
And not actually saying exactly where the location was, that it was nearby.
Correct. Thank you. Members of council have any questions of Marilyn?
I'm, I just, you know, my thanks toward, toward Marilyn, as much as the work that she's really taken on to help council and all of us understand the history of, of those cemeteries and, and their place in the community as we move forward. One, one thing I noted, and I'll have to check the recording, the deed that transferred the cemetery on Main Street that was formerly known as Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery from Lexington City, and the deed, I think Marilyn said there was a request to name it Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery, whereas says it's a suggestion. So maybe I'm nitpicking, but for the point of clarification, I wanted to make, make that, that point.
Yeah, and the city accepted that name and included it in the ordinance the next, the next year or, no, the same year, in 1949.
So the, the history of, of the Stonewall Cemetery, it's been called the Lexington Presbyterian Cemetery, it's been called the Lexington Cemetery, it's been called Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery, that by ordinance, is, it's for the purpose of discussion, has, have there, please refresh my memory on what other names that, that cemetery has, has taken.
Before the city took it over, it was called the Old Church Cemetery, the Lexington Cemetery, the Lexington Presbyterian Cemetery, and the Presbyterian Cemetery. So all, combination of all those names.
Right. Thank you.
This is a work session for you all to discuss a new name and invite that discussion.
If I could suggest, and we've had, you know, the survey, and then we've gotten some, some emails, and, you know, Frank's made a proposal. It might be really helpful if, rather than we look at, we, we narrow down the universe to what I think might encompass the, the names that people seem most interested in. Is that all right? If I, if I read these out, and then if I've missed something, please let me know. But I, I just, I feel like we need, we need to get down to a manageable number of, of names to work with. Would that be all right with everyone?
I think that's a great idea. I think the, the simpler we can make the process and understand the history from what I've seen.
Got it.
From the input from, from the local residents.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the, the seven that I've identified, but if I've missed some, something, you know, please stop me or add on to it. The first one is Providence Cemetery that, that Frank brought up. Lexington Memorial Cemetery being the second one, that's the number one suggestion from the survey. Oak Grove Cemetery or Lexington Oak Grove Cemetery, which is a reference to the fact that there was an oak grove there, and that's where the Presbyterians met before the church was built. Eric Wilson of Rockbridge Historical Society suggested Greenwood Cemetery, that's Greenwood with two words. A, a variation on Memorial Cemetery was Memorial Cemetery of Historic Lexington. And by the way, I, I think, it's my feeling, and I, I'm curious if you guys feel like this as well, but if, if indeed the new name for the, the cemetery includes Lexington in some form, like Lexington Memorial Cemetery or Memorial Cemetery of Lexington, I feel that this may be an opportunity to also put new signs at Evergreen, a chance for us to, to sort of bring the signage into kind of uniformity. And so it might be Evergreen of Lexington or Lexington Evergreen Cemetery. It just depends on where we're heading with, with, with the naming of the, of the, the Main Street Cemetery. Okay, so the, the last two were Magnolia Grove Cemetery. That was a suggestion from the public survey, and I believe that got some, some real support. Um, that was a suggestion from the public survey, and I I believe that got some some real support. Um, and then Main Street Cemetery of Lexington would be another option, that would be a very accurate geographical reference. So those are the seven that I kind of identified as being possible front runners. But if I miss something, again, please, please let me know, and we'll add it to this list.
I I guess based on the history of the cemetery and and the results, uh, my preference would be as as simply as possible Lexington Cemetery, and if there's some iteration, including Memorial, which casts some, a- again, the more more more, the memorial part is, you know, I think part of the reason why we're having this conversation to begin with, uh, or city or uh historical. But I think for the purposes of conversation, just 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 starting off with Lexington Cemetery. And uh, and moving forward from there, the the other uh suggestions that uh, I appreciate and um, take into account have uh, and some of them, there's you, you could argue some some separation of church and state problems. In the interest of uh avoiding as much argument and conflict as possible, I I'm I'm preferring the Lexington Cemetery and summit or and or some as iteration.
This is Leslie. Uh, I was actually gonna oppose any name that was Lexington Cemetery or reminiscent of the original name, since it was a all-white cemetery. And I think it also minimizes Evergreen. So my feeling, I don't like the name any version of Lexington Cemetery or Memorial Cemetery. But I do like the other options.
I'm just going off the the input that was provided from the from the citizens that that provided it. And the what I see coming clearly forward is uh Lexington Cemetery and or some iteration of it.
Yeah, and I guess that would be one other thing. I think the survey is a good tool, a good tool for gathering data. I do not think it it was intended or should be used to be a quantitative tool. And it's also difficult because people, some people don't realize the history of the name as well when they're making a suggestion. But so I I do not think it's a good idea for us to anyway use the survey as a quantitative tool.
Well, I I mean, I I would say that we did ask the public for their input. And, you know, that that needs to count for something, and it's, I mean, and they responded. And um you, you know, Lexington Memorial Cemetery, Chuck mentioned that, well, there may be some issues with Memorial Cemetery, because that's kind of what we're trying to get away from. But, you know, I I mean, it memorializes everybody in the cemetery currently and in the future. Um, I don't have a problem with the word memorial, and I I feel like, you know, people can can read into that what they will, and I mean, it's still going to be the bearer of places Stonewall Jackson, or still going to be, you know, so I I I feel, I feel Lexington Memorial Cemetery might be a a solution to this particular impasse. Um, I I also very much like Oak Grove Cemetery. I like that because um, that uh, the the Presbyterians met in an oak grove when they didn't have the church. And also, apparently, I read in a nineteen thirty-six book of Lexington that all of that part of Main Street, from Main Street all the way down to Woods Creek, was a giant oak grove. And so that's what was there in seventeen ninety-seven. And so that kind of has an appeal to me. Uh, I liked Eric Wilson's suggestion. But my concern is that all of them all of them are are okay, but you're going to find detractors for for everything. I I I I do think the public survey should be given some weight. Um, and the 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 choice that was the overarching choice was Lexington Memorial Cemetery.
Was Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery? Did it get more votes than Lexington Cemetery?
Yeah, I I mean, a- actually, any iteration of Stone, there were, there were way, way more Stonewall, keep the name the same. There were a lot of insults, it was an interesting read. Um, but I I'm talking about the ones that actually offered a suggestion for a name change.
I think it just proves that using as a quantitative tool is not a good idea.
Well, I don't think you can use the the input of Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery as an argument if this council unanimously has chosen to remove that from from the naming process.
Agreed, I think, I don't think we should use it as a quantitative tool. I do like the idea of the Oak Grove Cemetery for the reasons that Dennis said, that whole area was an oak grove, and it relates to Evergreen. Um, same with Greenwood, it relates, it relates to Evergreen. It has that eternal quality about it, that living, continuing to live. I like Magnolia Grove for the same reason. And if uh, at Providence, I like, it doesn't have to just be divine, as in godly providence, it could be by nature as well. So I, and I do think that relates well with Evergreen. And if we really had to choose a generic name, for me, it would be the Main Street Cemetery of Lexington. But I I really think these other names have more merit, more meaning, and and form more of a relationship with Evergreen.
From day one, I've been uh, I've had reservations of going full steam ahead and slapping the name Lexington as as the primary name of that cemetery. Out of um, out of an understanding that this community for many years has been served by two cemeteries. And the history lesson that we have, we learned that there have been many other cemeteries. And so I've been partial to thinking of out, and again, I want to hear from the community, and that's why I personally don't want to come to any type of consensus tonight, except to come down to four, five, six names. But to lean toward Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington or Main Street Cemetery of Lexington, that would then potentially be linked to Evergreen. And to see if Evergreen could be designated as Evergreen Cemetery of Lexington, so that they're, they are, they are linked. They are, they are on equal footing, which is very, very important uh to me. I think that the history lesson that Marilyn delivered and that has been uh shared in different forms uh recently and and that different groups have learned over the years, I mean, it's tremendous. Even the the quick hitter information that Doug Harwood put forward to us, it's eye-opening, it's a lesson to many of us that have lived here for a long time. And so that's why I I wanted to just tread very carefully by just slapping Lexington Cemetery on it. And would personally prefer Main Street Cemetery of Lexington or an Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington in conjunction with the Evergreen Cemetery of Lexington.
Hey, well, um, so I was uh kind of looking at the survey. And because we wanted input from the community, and so many had responded. Some variations of Lexington Memorial Cemetery, Lexington Cemetery, Historic Lexington Cemetery. Add all those up, it's quite a number. So I was leaning toward um, the uh Lexington Memorial Cemetery. Um, certainly though, you know, if I'm gonna pick three or four, um, you know, I also like Oak Grove at Lexington or of Lexington. Um, I I I read Eric's suggestion of Greenwood, and I thought, you know, that sounded nice. But I I guess I wanted to distinguish, I was thought of, might be a little too confusing to have two cemeteries with green in it. So I prefer Oak Grove, if we're gonna go in that kind of direction. I also actually, what wasn't mentioned, I was thinking of when um, Leslie was talking about kind of bringing all all the cemeteries together. Um, earlier, she had mentioned that, um, there was one, someone said suggested Lexington Unity Cemetery, uh, which had a nice ring to it for me. But um, if I was to just go by, you know, if we're gonna go by, you know, our community and input, and we were asking for input, uh, you know, again, I I that's why I was leaning toward the Lexington Memorial Cemetery or some variation of that, so. But I I really appreciate Marilyn, the the history was very interesting uh that about that Washington Street Cemetery, but also very disturbing. Um, just, you know, just obviously, many people buried there, and they weren't moved, so. Um, anyway, so lots of good suggestions.
Well, so so that would, if if we add Lexington Unity Cemetery, that that gets us up to eight possibilities. Do you, do you guys want to see if we can maybe drop some of these out? Would that be a worthwhile thing to do at this stage, or?
Maybe uh, maybe go through the list again, uh, the first time.
So uh sorry, uh, number one is Providence Cemetery. Number two is Lexington Memorial Cemetery. Number three is Oak Grove Cemetery or Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington. Uh, number four is Greenwood Cemetery. Uh, number five is i- is really just a variation of Memorial Cemetery, so we'll we'll take that one off. Um, Magnolia Grove Cemetery, um, Main Street Cemetery of Lexington, and Lexington Unity Cemetery. So that's seven still.
And could it be Unity Cemetery of Lexington, to kind of keep it similar to the uh
It's, it sounds like, I I mean, that's one thing perhaps we could decide on now. It sounds like most of us agree that that Lexington should not be the first part of any name we choose. So it would be an of Lexington kind of arrangement. Are we kind of in agreement on that?
Yeah, but whatever you name it, if it's going to include Lexington, it should probably say of Lexington. So that when you look at Evergreen, it would be Evergreen of Lexington.
Right, right. Okay, so that part's decided. So so, so then it's Providence Cemetery, uh, Memorial Cemetery, Oak Grove Cemetery, Greenwood Cemetery, Magnolia Grove Cemetery, or Main Street Cemetery, or Unity Cemetery.
You know, it is worth noting, when we talked about Greenwood, you mentioned obviously Evergreen, but also the cemetery, a main cemetery in Buena Vista is uh Green Hill Cemetery. Uh, so we are continuing to to lean toward one color uh that. Um, and when guests are from out of town and they're looking for possibly a cemetery to visit a loved one or or for a service, we don't want to confuse them maybe too much.
The green one.
Yeah.
Okay, so 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 should we pull that one off our list? I I mean, I I I like it, but I personally, I like Oak Grove better, just because of the the more specific historical reference.
I'm in agreement with you, Dennis. I mean, I I I like the the name, but I do like Oak Grove better, and and so
Okay, all right, so we'll we'll take that one off for now. So now we're down to six. Uh, my concern with Providence, Frank, um, I I I think it's a lovely word. I just i- i- it has I I I'm not sure it's an inclusive enough word. Um, how how to put that? I- i- it it may be too specifically religious a term for a public cemetery that that really has all denominations. So I I'm a little less keen on that one.
Well, no one's asked uh, now behind it, and being the lone Presbyterian in acting or active Presbyterian uh in the group. Um, it it's a uh, a a thought or a term that's frequently used. Um, i- in my opinion, the Presbyterian faith. And um, I would yield to our attorneys whether or not there's a conflict at church and state, as I'm certainly not. But the the idea of the foreseen care and guidance uh of nature over the creatures of the earth um, seemed pretty inclusive to me. Uh, there are references to a uh, a big G God, um, and that's part of the origin of it. Uh, certainly, the cemetery is not um, in intended to be exclusive to any um, religion whatsoever. And um, I I don't think Providence, uh, thinking about, uh, again, foreseen care and guidance of nature over the creatures of earth um, could could be misconstrued. But that was the logic uh behind and the ties to Lexington Presbyterian Church. Um, which, um, when we we look at our history, uh, our entire community has a jaded, bad history. Um, no one's commented on Marilyn's uh piece and Tamara Duval's delivery. I'm appalled that in nineteen seventy-one, uh, A, that Marilyn was graduating from high school, I thought she was much younger. Uh, number two, that there was that uh information and handouts said it was only for white people. Um, knowing people that were on city council at that time, um, being uh familiar with them and uh knowing pillars of our community, I I'm stunned and shocked that that was in place. I don't know when it changed, but I'm thankful that it did. And I think that's history that we need to eradicate um in general and be more uh endearing to all God's creatures or all nature's creatures uh as it relates to this effort. And I wasn't really sure what the criteria was, other than a new name that wasn't offensive. And um, that was um, my offering was Providence. But certainly welcome you to stricken it, um, if it's not the consensus of council to utilize. My feelings won't be hurt, but I did feel that um, uh, I I need to share that story and the connection with Lexington Presbyterian Church. But um, given some of the characters that attended there, um, it may, city may do well to disassociate themselves from uh the Presbyterian Church after purchasing the cemetery from them.
Can I, on a different topic, one of the cemeteries is Memorial Cemetery of Lexington. Does remembrance have any interest? I think the difference between memorial and remembrance, and as it, remembrance was described as we should remember all people and events um, at both cemetery, that both cemeteries hold, because that is what makes up Lexington. Um, in some ways, I like that better than memorial.
I think we need a whiteboard.
But if that doesn't have any appeal, we can strike it. But I I would prefer that word over memorial, but I don't really like memorial cemetery.
I don't know why, it just sounds quite different to me, like going from Memorial Cemetery of Lexington to just Lexington Memorial Cemetery. At least for me.
Yeah, to me too. I have to say that that I I I kind of like the sound of Lexington Memorial Cemetery, but I I'm not that keen on Memorial Cemetery of Lexington.
Yeah, so I I wouldn't mind striking that, that version of, I would rather just keep Lexington Memorial Cemetery
Yeah.
than not have memorial, I just don't, I don't know, it just doesn't sound right to me.
Yeah, a- a- and my feeling is, if if we did go that route, I mean, I would be comfortable with 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 also having Evergreen Cemetery be Lexington Evergreen Cemetery. Because it is Lexington's Evergreen Cemetery. There are a number of Evergreen Cemeteries out there. It would be nice to identify it as our cemetery. Um, so, you know, one of the i- i- if we, if we were to go the route of Lexington Memorial Cemetery, I feel like we would almost have to also have the name of Evergreen be Lexington Evergreen Cemetery.
I guess that would be, we'd go through an official ordinance change to officially make that if we did go that route. And I don't know if that's a question for Jared or the group.
Well, this is Jared. Just so you know, all of, pretty much all, I don't want to say, all of the code sections that we need to change uh, to change the name of Stonewall Jackson also include Evergreen. So um, it's really just a matter of adding a name change that um, y'all would like. y'all would like to add to Evergreen would be part of the same process with really no additional work other than deciding on the new name for Evergreen.
Personally, I would prefer not to preempt Evergreen, and that's why I've been partial to Evergreen Cemetery of Lexington. And when we, again, choose a new name for the cemetery located on Main Street, that's why I was, I've been partial to selecting a name for it and then tacking on at the end of Lexington. I just, that, that's how I feel. I feel like Evergreen is a landmark. And it should not be preempted. Lexington should not preempt Evergreen here. I, I just don't think that that should be the case, but that's, that's, that's just me. This is a work session and I hope we do get feedback. But I, my, my goal was not to make a big change to the name of that cemetery, but just to align it with the name of the one on Main Street, not, not a full name change of Lexington Evergreen.
What, what do we have right now? Oak Grove, Magnolia Grove?
Yeah, Oak Grove, Magnolia Grove, Main Street. We, we haven't, Frank, I want to thank you for your, your explanation of providence. It is a lovely word and I, you know, the Presbyterian church has such a history in our town and a, and a good history for the most, so I, I, I don't mean to sound negative about that. I just, for purposes of naming this, it's, it, it would be one that I, I'd be willing to take off the list. How, how do other folks feel?
I, I agree with that. I would also submit removing Magnolia Grove. I'm, I'm not sure how that fits in with the cemetery there. I know we have a few Magnolias around town, really majestic ones, but I, I'm not sure if I see any over in the, in the cemetery.
There, I did look, there are some, and it relates to Evergreen. It is an Evergreen.
All right. Okay, so if, if we did that, then we're at, we're at Oak Grove, we're at Main Street, we're at Memorial Cemetery. And I.
Unity?
Oh, and Unity Cemetery. Okay, so, so down to, down to Oak Grove, Unity, Main Street, Memorial.
Are you gonna say Lexington Memorial, or would you, we decide no memorial, you know?
I don't like memorial.
I mean, I think we, we, we agreed that we didn't like Memorial Cemetery of Lexington. It would be.
That's true, we did not. So, so if you guys are adamantly opposed to Lexington Memorial because of the not doing Lexington Evergreen, then I think we're gonna have to take that one off. I, I am not opposed to Lexington Evergreen and Lexington Memorial. I think that, but, but it, it sounds as though others are. So if that's the case, then, then we can drop that one.
Could I just say, why, why would you have to have? Why couldn't you have just Evergreen Cemetery of Lexington and Lexington Memorial Cemetery? Is that? So are we all in agreement that we have to have this of Lexington or something like that, or?
I mean, even if you have Evergreen of Lexington and you have Lexington, whatever, whatever. It should be fine. You have Lexington in both, whether it's at the head or the.
Right.
Okay.
It just depends on how, how it flows. How the name flows. Lexington Evergreen doesn't flow as well as Evergreen of Lexington.
True.
That's true, and Lexington Memorial flows a lot better than Memorial of Lexington, so maybe they don't have to be the same. So if they're not, then correct me if I'm wrong, but now I, I count four options. Oak Grove, Unity, Main Street, and Lexington Memorial. And did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Oak Grove, what? Oak Grove Cemetery.
That could either be Oak Grove of Lexington, Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington, or Lexington Oak Grove Cemetery, either one.
Well, Marilyn, what, do you have any feel for, would it upset people to kind of rename Evergreen to Evergreen of Lexington?
I don't think so, because they're still gonna call it the Evergreen Cemetery.
Right.
As, I think it, it would be fine.
So, o- o- of that option, what do people like better? Do you like Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington, or do you like Lexington Oak Grove Cemetery? Or?
Oak Grove leading it.
Oak Grove Cemetery, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington. As far as Unity goes, do we prefer Unity Cemetery of Lexington? Is that, is that where we are with that one as well? Or?
Or Lexington. Or Lexington Unitary Cemetery? Is that too hard to say?
What is it?
Unitary would be a denomination, so unity, right?
That's how it was on the survey, unitary.
And just to, while you're working there, Dennis, I'd say the, I'm not sure who to give credit, but mention, you know, we're, we're not looking to get down to a final name tonight. And being able to marinate on these and reflect, I think will be helpful, the conversation of what everyone's feeling and what they like is very helpful, I think, in working towards a consensus. And I appreciate everybody being so focused and informative with their opinions. I think it's, it's one of the healthy things about a work session where we're not making any decisions, but evolving and working towards one from that standpoint. But at this point, you dwindled the list to four.
Yes.
Want to review those, those obviously will, will be able to make available to the public as well.
Okay, so the four that I got here, and correct me if I missed something, is Oak Grove Cemetery, Unity Cemetery, Main Street Cemetery, or Lexington Memorial Cemetery.
I, I'm not sure if I was muted before, but did we definitely strike Magnolia Cemetery? Or Magnolia Grove?
I think so.
Okay.
Somebody was talking about there not being any Magnolias in the cemetery that they know of.
There are Magnolias. I checked. I know. And, and a Magnolia is an Evergreen, so it sort of relates, but if that's not a top contender, it's fine with me. I just wanna, I still like that one as one of the top five.
I think that's a really pretty name. I just think that if we're gonna go the route of a tree, the, the historical connection to the Oak Grove thing is, is, is pretty compelling, and I like that one better.
That's fine.
Also like to pull out my Streets of Lexington book, and I don't have it with me. See what it says about Providence Hill, if anything. To see where that name came from. To see if it has anything contextual to, to go along with this. So I will report that back to you.
On that, that, that was another reason I didn't want to have to say, but I think there's a connotation with that.
And Jared had emailed a question, or Jim forwarded a question. Are we limited by any of these names being trademarked? I guess if we add up Lexington, what, what, are there any issues with the naming?
The only, of the ones I've heard so far, the only one that sort of raises the possible concern, and it sounds like this is going in a different direction, was Lexington Memorial Park, considering there are some cemeteries around with private cemeteries with Memorial Park as the title. But I think where it sounds like things are headed, everything's fine. Like Oak Grove Cemetery of Lexington is both generic in one sense and specific enough in the other that I don't think that'll cause any problems, or any of the others that seem to be under active consideration.
So, can we talk for a second about next steps and, and the process? I, I, I kind of need a reminder of, of how, and maybe if anybody's listening in, they might need a reminder as well. If we've narrowed this down to four potential names, you know, we, we would invite the public to, you know, share their comments with us about these names. And then on our September 3 meeting next week.
Actually, August 6.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, August, August 6. Well, I'm skipping a month. So at, at that stage, we would, we would vote on a, a kind of a final name and then, and then ask Jared to, to draft an ordinance for, for a discussion at the next meeting. Is that how it works?
I would, wait, no, sorry.
I was gonna say, I'd offer up the, the proposed schedule that's been, uh, city council mapped out and has been following. It's after this work session would again, to have it as a agenda item for any discussion, further discussion about the names. With the expectation on August 20 meeting that council would select a name, and that would give Jared the opportunity to insert the name and do the advertising for the ordinance review, public hearing scheduled for September 3.
Okay.
That way it gives it plenty of time to be in the paper and maybe even the advocate. I'm not sure if we're too late for that already.
And, and actually, I'm not sure if we did, but I, I want to thank Doug Harwood for, a- a- and Eric Wilson of the Rockridge Historical Society for all of the information that he provided all of us. They really fascinating stuff, and I just wanted to specifically call out those guys for their, for their input.
I, I hope there's some way for us to disseminate the information because it is exceedingly rich history. Marilyn did a great job of consolidating it, if you will, in, in her presentation. But given some of the facts and, and additional details, I think this is just a great teachable moment for our community, and especially for the children in our community, to understand where we've been. And hope that we have, in the hopes that we have a, a more positive and prosperous future, springboarding from this. From that standpoint, but one of the things for, this is a question for council, perhaps just an affirmation. The original, your, your source of getting input from the public was Survey Monkey. David, you had mentioned in your comments tonight, you know, folks being able to hear these names and give feedback. Remind people that they can call individually, they can write council as a group, drop off comments at City Hall, or certainly attend our August 6 meeting and share with us their preference perhaps for names or the direction we're going. There won't be a open forum, is not planned by choice, and we'll continue to have it as an agenda item at our August 6 and August 20 meetings. So I, that's a question, looking for affirmation from council, that that's how you want to proceed.
That sounds like a good point.
Thing would be is if we did do one last one week Survey Monkey with the five or four names with no ability to write in a, a profane suggestion, and just to say, pick from these four, pick from these five. If that, if anyone wanted to do that. But I also find that people have no problem tracking us down to share their opinions and, and would ask them to do that again in this situation.
Do you mean just like a button poll where you have the four names up and whoever responds picks one?
Right, just, just an idea, exactly, Chuck. Just an idea if, if the rest of council was open to that, if they saw any merits in that.
I guess that this is related, is, is there any, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with Survey Monkey. Is there avenues for, I mean, if someone really wanted to skew the results, if we did proceed in that way? Is there a way for one person to just, you know, somehow vote a zillion times on, on one name?
Yeah, there is. I mean, I mean, the, the survey sets a cookie on the browser, but you can clear your cookies and, and vote again, and, you know, it, it, it wouldn't stop you, so it is true that, that you could skew that. So, for that reason, I am okay not going with the poll and inviting our, you know, our, our, our community members to give us a call or grab us or send us an email and, and let us know what they think. I do think that we should post the four names that were seriously considered, maybe on the websites, if people can, can, you know, review those.
I think that's a good idea, and, and I certainly understand why we, doing the, doing a poll might not be a, a good, a good idea. And like I referenced, folks have not had any problem finding me to share their opinions, and, and I'm sure they haven't had any challenges finding any of you, and, and so this is one more opportunity for them to, to contact us and to weigh in with their thoughts.
Yeah, and maybe on Facebook as well.
And, and actually, if, if anybody in the public is listening, I, I want to say, I do get, I, I do get calls that people don't leave a message on, and, and I, just to be careful these days, I don't answer the phone directly, but I will respond to anybody's message. So if you leave me a message, I will return your call. If you don't leave a message, though, I, I don't, so just please leave a message if, if, if you call and want me to call you back. Thank you.
Thank you for the affirmation. Chuck, did you have something else?
No, other than, than to kind of follow along with, with Dennis was saying, that with, with so many robo calls these days, you spend more time picking up the phone and waiting to extend your car warranty or, 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 or get a new credit card. So, yeah, I'm in the same boat. I, I tend to not answer a lot of calls unless I know the number, and if there's no message left, then I'll find something else to do.
Very good.
Thank you. Yep.
Great. I'm not aware of any additional business or items to cover. Janie would ask that you, as council suggested, I would take that as a directive. If you can perhaps add the names to the city manager's report, and also list those on Facebook by the, the first of the week should be fine. And if that's any problem, just set, alert me and we can work through the details. But congratulations to council on getting to this juncture, and look forward to our, our meeting next Thursday. Again, we invite people to come and speak at the public comment section of the city council meetings that are held the first and third Thursdays at 8 o'clock, virtually on Zoom. It's now 6:03. If there's nothing else for the good of the cause, we will stand adjourned. Anything else?
Just to add that, I understand that Providence Hill has something to do with Benjamin Borden, who settled here in the 1700s, but that's all I know so far.
Excellent. Our historian in residence, Marilyn, thank you.
No, the other historian of Lexington.
Anything else? Very good. Well, have a great night and a better weekend.
Thank you, you too.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye, y'all.